Recording in progress.
Colleagues, if you could take your seats, please. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I see Counselor Kellis standing, so he's going to lead it for us.
The United States, America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you all. We have a full house this evening for happy events, a series of commendations which make us all very glad that you're all here. I do need to identify that online I have Counselor Albright, Grossman, and Gentile all participating online. This meeting is being both audiotaped and videotaped. We're going to start off with, just by way of order, with the Salvucci Scholarship recipients are going to start. The Ligerbots, who are rather visible out there in their T-shirts. And then, this is Autism Month, and we're Autism Pride Day, excuse me, and we're going to honor that with a resolution. So I'm going to start by inviting Councillors Humphrey and Greenberg, who chaired our committee that reviewed the applications for the Salvucci Scholarship. For those of you, many of us served with the late Anthony Salvucci, who was a ward counselor for many years from Ward Three, and really quite beloved by all of us. And so, the city council scholarships for high school students were renamed in his memory some years ago, something I think was a wonderful thing for us to do. So I'm going to ask for suspension of the rules to invite both the recipients of the scholarship inside the rail to come up here, and for their parents to be able to step right near Counselors Block and Bixby if they want to take pictures. All in favor of suspending the rules? I need a motion. Counselor Lucas is so moved. All in favor, please say aye. Will the two recipients please come up, please, and their parents are welcome to join us? And I'll turn it over to Counselor Humphrey then.
All right, so as Council President Laredo said, this is the Salvucci Scholarship, which is a scholarship that we provide as city councilors to a member of our graduating classes from Newton South, Newton North. And the purpose of this scholarship is to help advance students that are planning to study government or politics in college, something that is of interest to all 24 of us as city councilors. I am previously a recipient myself of this scholarship many years ago, which is one reason that I'm on the review committee to select people. We had a bunch of people apply. We read essays, we looked at resumes, and tried to evaluate who the standouts were. We have two great standouts this year who we'll be hearing from in just a few moments. From Newton North, Alyssa Kraus; from Newton South, Shayla Belucci. And I think that it's worth reflecting this year, this is a very challenging time in American government and politics. In many ways, it's a very frightening time. And I think that encouraging some of our young people to study this topic with some thought and deliberation over the next few years is a good investment on our part. And so I think we're very proud to be able to provide this scholarship to encourage these bright and talented young students to think about these issues over the next few years and think about what they can do to serve their community and their country and the world. And so I'm looking forward to hearing from them, and I hope you'll all join me in congratulating them on this scholarship. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to start by thanking the city council, and specifically you two, for awarding me this scholarship. In the personal statement that I submitted to this scholarship, I wrote about how my experience both as an elected representative and as a constituent has shaped my interest and involvement in government. As the Chair of Newton North Student Faculty Administration, I saw how important it is for a legislative body to act on behalf of the people that it's representing, and how important the input from those constituents is, those constituents. This experience has shown me how vital it is to be an actively involved member of the community myself. I'm thankful that the City of Newton and Newton Public Schools has given me the opportunity to pursue my interests in politics and social justice, not only through the SFA, but through school trips, curricular content, and support from many kind teachers. I plan to major in political science at Brown University in the fall, and I hope to continue my involvement in government. Thank you again.
I didn't have mine written, but it's very dear to my heart, about social justice, anything. As mentioned, how things in the world are not going in the best way right now. But with this scholarship and with, you know, City of Newton and excellent teachers at Newton South, I was able to pursue my passions and help people during school hours and in my free time. I was so glad to have met people like Ms. Sumner, where I was able to go to Carver Middle High and help kids who didn't have the best programs like we do, like Legacy Scholars and CCOR. So just being able to have such a great community that we can help others. And now I can take that experience and take it to my college, the University of Pittsburgh, in the fall, and just make just a better world, better future for not only ourselves, but our kids and, you know, future generations. So I'm very thankful to be in front of all of you and for this scholarship to pursue that and make a change.
If the parents want to come up closer and take pictures, please feel free to do so. Next, we have, I'll need a motion for suspension of the rules to allow our red-shirted folks in the audience to come in. Counselor Oliver has made the motion for the Ligerbots to come into the chamber. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Ligerbots, come on up, and colleagues who are presenting this award, please come on up to the podium. And if anybody wants to take a picture, please feel free to step inside the rails and do so.
Counselor Malakie, can you come up, please? Comfortable back there? Okay, so here is a testimonial commendation, a proclamation for the Ligerbots, Newton North and South's robotics team. Whereas the Ligerbots, the combined high school robotics team of the Newton North and Newton South, have completed the most successful season in their 17-year history, and...
And, at the New England District event held at the University of New Hampshire, the Ligerbots were part of the Winning Alliance, received the prestigious Quality Award, qualified for the District Championship, and finished 17th of 191 teams in New England. And Ligerbots were part of the Winning Alliance at the inaugural Massachusetts State Championship, and...
The team qualified for the first World Championship, where 601 of the top 3,701 teams globally competed over four days in Houston, Texas, and...
Whereas the Ligerbots were on the Winning Alliance of the Hopper Division, earned the division's Autonomous Award, and advanced to compete on the Einstein Field as one of only 32 teams in the World Finals, and...
And whereas Team Mentor John Sangiolo was one of only two recipients of the New England District Woody Flowers Finalist Award, which celebrates excellence in communication and mentorship, and the art and science of engineering and design, and...
Whereas Emily Perman, a Newton South junior, was selected as the New England District Dean's List semifinalist, recognizing her leadership, dedication, and distinction as one of the most outstanding high school students in first.
And now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Newton City Council, do hereby congratulate the Ligerbots on their exceptional achievements and extend our deepest appreciation for the team's commitment to excellence, innovation, and community spirit. Resolution offered this 16th day of June on behalf of the Newton City Council and the City of Newton by Councillors Wright, Malakie, Oliver, Lucas, Getz, and Farrell. Congratulations, Ligerbots.
But we are not done yet. I have a resolution here from the Massachusetts House of Representatives, which I will read. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Ligerbots in recognition of an outstanding and incredible, successful season, winning the first Massachusetts championship and earning accolades at the first World Championship. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses a hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 16th day of June 2025 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, by Ronald Mariano, Speaker of the House, offered by Amy Ma Sangiello, State Representative, and Gregory Schwartz, State Representative. Congratulations, Ligerbots. All right. If folks want to take more pictures, why don't you move up a little bit, please? And we'll get out of the way. Thank you so much. Thank you all for all your efforts. You're really, really... Thank you. Take care. Thank you so, so much. All right, while the Ligerbots exit, we have one other recognition this evening. I'm going to invite Jack Lovett to join us, but I need a suspension of the rules, Jack, before I do that. So so moved by Counselor Kelly, all in favor of suspending the rules to welcome Mr. Lovett. And, Mr. Lovett, is someone else joining you? Excellent. If all of, we could have a suspension of the rules to welcome all of them inside the rail. Please say, motion by Counselor Kelly, please say aye if you're in favor. Aye. No opposed. Come on up, please. And Councillors Baker and Kellis will join me at the podium.
Today is June 16, 2025. This testimonial commendation, proclamation for Autism Pride Day. Autistic people are a valued and diverse part of our community, whose lives, contributions, and identities have historically been misunderstood, marginalized, or erased. And Autism Pride Day, and whereas Autism Pride Day first celebrated in 2005 by autistic-led organizations, is an annual celebration by and for autistic individuals rooted in the principles of self-determination, neurodiversity, recognition of challenges, and dignity. And whereas autistic people have the right to be recognized and celebrated, not for how well they conform to social norms, but for who they are, whether speaking or non-speaking, masked or unmasked, young or old, identify as neurodivergent or disabled, or still exploring what pride means to them, and...
Whereas autism impacts people regardless of race, ethnicity, and socio-economic backgrounds. And whereas the celebration of Autism Pride Day includes sensory-friendly environments, neurodiversity-affirming community activities, visibility for autistic art, and voices, and tools for inclusive interaction. And whereas local schools and community organizations play a vital role in validating and uplifting neurodivergent students through inclusive curricula, public recognition, and culturally responsive learning environments, and...
Whereas the City of Newton affirms the right of autistic individuals to be fully visible, included, and supported in all areas of life, including education, employment, healthcare, and public life. And whereas Autism Pride Day provides an opportunity for community members to learn, reflect, celebrate, and stand in solidarity with the autistic community, recognizing its diversity and the ways intersectional identities impact autistic people, and promoting belonging, mental wellness, and human rights for all. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Newton City Council, do hereby declare June 18 as Autism Pride Day and encourage residents, schools, businesses, and community organizations to join in recognizing, affirming, and celebrating the richness and diversity of autistic lives. Resolution offered this 16th day of June on behalf of the Newton City Council and the City of Newton by myself, City Council President Mark Laredo, City Council Vice President David Kellis, and City Council President Emeritus R. Lyle Baker. So, thank you. And Haley has some words to add for us, please. Haley, go ahead.
I learned that I was autistic when I was seven years old, and it has impacted my life. I have had many experiences with people treating me differently because of my autism. And I feel like sometimes you can treat a person differently, but you should probably treat them the same. Autism has impacted my life in many ways. And, but I can honestly say that I would not be myself if I wasn't autistic. I embrace my autistic self and the fact that I am who I am. Autism Pride Day is not my idea. It was made in 2005, before I was even born. And I was just the one who suggested Newton recognize it. And honestly, I am so amazed that something an 11-year-old girl suggested got so big. And I'd like to thank some people. Jack, for working on the Commission for Disability. Emma, for handling political things. And Jenna Groons, for helping with us to plan this and to get everything ready. I've also designed this. This is our symbol for Autism Pride Day, Newton. First, a description for anybody who may be visually impaired. The sticker is a two-by-two circular design with a sky-blue background. At the top is a white cloud with the Autism Pride Infinity symbol representing it. Below the cloud are five stick figures with arms spread out wide. From left to right, they are blue, gray, bright pink, softer pink, and reddish pink, with the bright pink one in the middle slightly bigger than the others. Below that are the words Autism Pride Day, Newton, in pink letters with a golden glow outline. The rainbow infinity symbol is for autism and neurodiversity. The cloud is because clouds are everyone on Earth and not going away, and nobody would want them to go away because they are beautiful. Autism is also that way. The different colored people symbolize that all different people can be autistic. There is a stereotype that more boys are autistic than girls, so even though pink is stereotypical representation for girls, I did like that the pink person is the biggest because all genders can be autistic. The pink letters are just because it looked good, but the golden glow behind the letters is because gold represents autism because of gold being AU. I want to thank some people who are more personal to me in my life. I'd like to thank my mom. She's right there. Hi. I want to thank everybody who has helped me along the way and been supportive of me throughout my journey. And I just want to say, I am so proud to have Autism Pride Day represented in Newton.
So, thank you all very much. Thank you to, obviously, proud mom who's taking pictures right there. And Haley, I can assure you that at your age, I would have been scared just to get up here, never mind to make the kinds of thoughtful, heartfelt comments that you were able to do to a filled room. So that is truly remarkable, and I hope you take those same skill sets forward because you have a tremendous amount to offer us in the future. And we'll look forward to hearing from you in the future a lot. So thank you very much. Thank you to all of you for being here. Colleagues, thank you very much. And we're greatly appreciative and want to make sure that you have the commendation. Yeah, you're welcome to come closer if you'd like. So you want to hold that, or whomever you want to give it to? Thank you all so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. So colleagues, now that we've gotten past what has been the more enjoyable and interesting and fulfilling part of our evening, we do have to get back to our daily... we do have to get back to our daily or nightly work at full council meetings. So as everyone exits and we're left with only a few government stalwarts who want to come hear us, we are going to go to our first call list. We do have two items on second call. I think both of those will be disposed of fairly quickly. So with that, I'm going to recognize Chair Kelly for the Land Use Committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was a joyful start to a meeting that often seems boring for people, colorful too. The Land Use Committee report starts on page 109. We met on May 6, and at that meeting, we took up item number 124-25, which was a request to allow parking in the front setback at 22 Owatonna Street. That was approved 8-0. Item number 126-25, which was a request to further increase non-conforming FAR and lot coverage at 100 Bellevue Street, approved 8 to 0. Item 127-25, which was a request to further increase non-conforming FAR and to further decrease non-conforming open space...
Point of order?
Yeah.
In the middle of a sentence?
Yeah. I think you're on the wrong page, Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Counsel Lucas. You jumped ahead of me. Page 139, if you would.
What was last month's? I was sure I was going to do it...
And we already approved those, so we're not going to revisit any of that.
Did we really do that again?
You know, Counselor Lucas, I was being so polite there, but you were being much more appropriate.
You should have interrupted me a few seconds ago. My clip did not work, and I was sure I was going to do it all right tonight. Okay, this is June 16. Page 139. We met on June 3. We approved item number 154-25, a request to further extend non-conforming FAR and to allow three stories at 30 Glendale Road. That was approved 8 to 0. Item 155-25, a request to allow three attached single-family dwellings at 3 Newland Street. Oh, that's the one that's on second call, I believe.
That is correct. That was voted subject to second call.
But we'll be hearing more about that later. 156-25, request to allow ground-floor residential use to allow three stories to exceed FAR and associated parking waivers at 1062 Beacon Street. Oh, that was also held. Then, if I may, and I think I'm going to be correct on this one, I'd like to request a couple of public hearings.
Please go ahead, Chair Kelly.
I'd like to request hearings for items 190-25, 189-25, and 188-25, and 187-25, which are on page 151. I'd like to set those public hearings for July 8. And then we have second call. I hope I finished correctly. Thank you, Counsel Lucas.
I think the public hearings, correct. Thank you, Chair Kelly.
Counselor...
Next, I have Chair Baker for the Zoning and Planning Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met on June 9. We discussed a number of items, and we're going to take them up again in September with public hearings, but all items were held. So I have no items to report for action.
Thank you. Chair Krenzman for Programs and Services, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The report begins on page 141. Programs and Services Committee met on June 4. First item is item 106-25. This is the appropriation of $75,000 for a community health assessment and community health improvement plan. Programs and Services voted no action necessary by a vote of 4 to 0. Item 122-25, the appropriation of $150,000 for library data wiring, was approved by the committee by a vote of 4 to 0. Item 148-25, the reappointment of Sean Fitzgibbons to the Licensing Board, was approved by a vote of 4 to 0. Item 153-25, the reappointment of Andrea Teeman-Mackeny as a Newton Library trustee, was approved by a vote of 4 to 0. And finally, item 170-25, the authorization to transfer $150,000 for legal services, was approved by a vote of 4 to 0. With that, I would move the report.
Thank you, Counsel Krenzman. Chair Grossman for Public Safety and Transportation, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met on June 4, and our report begins on page 142. Our first item, 157-25, was two bus license renewals for the 128 Business Council. That was approved 5 to 0. Item 158-25, two bus license renewals for the Boston College Bus, was approved 5 to 0. Item 159-25, four bus license renewals for VPNE Parking Solutions LLC, was approved 5 to 0. Item 171-25, appropriation and transfer of $4,510,000 for the Newton Patrol Association Collective Bargaining Agreement, was approved 5 to 0. Item 78-25, semi-annual public auto inspections, was approved 5 to 0. And finally, item 180-25, transfer of $1,952,500 for the Newton Patrol Association Collective Bargaining Agreement, was approved 5 to 0. With that, I move the report.
Thank you, Chair Grossman. Chair Albright for Public Facilities, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Our report begins on page 143 at the bottom. We met on June 4. First item was held. Second item, 160-25, Her Honor the Mayor requesting authorization to expend $1,300,000 from free cash to support additional sidewalk paving and ADA ramp improvements. That was approved 8 to 0. Item 164-25, Her Honor the Mayor requesting an authorization to appropriate and expand $250,000 from free cash and $750,000 from account 014012-511002, DPW Street Full-Time Wages, for snow and ice contractors. And that was approved 8 to 0. Item 169-25, Her Honor the Mayor requesting the authorization to transfer $139,000 with $58,000 from account... Do you want me to read this number?
I think you can skip the reading of the number, Chair Albright.
Okay, and the purpose is to cover pension obligation shortfall in water and sewer funds. And that was approved 7 to 0. 176-25, Her Honor the Mayor and Counselor Downs requesting a discussion and amendment to the City of Newton revised ordinances to rename Newton Citizen Commission on Energy to the Newton Energy Commission. That was approved 7-0. And the last item was held. And with that, I move the report. And I would only mention that on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, we'll be having an interesting discussion with National Grid and Eversource to discuss a possible planning process to electrify the City of Newton. It would be a two-year planning process. So all are welcome to come and join us.
Thank you, Chair Albright. For the Finance Committee, I'm going to recognize Vice Chair Malachi, who is in the chamber, and I noted a fairly lengthy list tonight.
Thank you, yes, another lengthy list. Okay, so the report begins on page 145. Finance Committee met on June 9. First item, number 160-25, authorization to expend $1,300,000 to support the city's transportation network improvement program, approved 8 to 0. Number 161-25, appropriation of $25,000 for fiscal year 25 veteran benefit expenses, approved 7 to 0. Number 162-25, appropriation of $200,000 to the Newton Communications Access Center from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, approved 7 to 0. Number 163-25, authorization to transfer $2,925 for interest. That was approved 8 to 0. Number 164-25, appropriation of $1 million for snow and ice removal from FY24 Certified Free Cash, approved 8 to 0. Number 166-25, accept and expend a $50,000 Commonwealth of Massachusetts FY25 State earmark for the Washington Street Pilot Program. And that allowed for increased landscaping than we had expected before. That was approved 7 to 0. Number 167-25, appropriation of $31,073 for traffic safety and operational measures from various mitigation funds, approved 8 to 0. Number 168-25, authorization to transfer $50... Oh, pardon me, $50 to Veteran Services full-time salaries. That was sort of a housekeeping item, approved 8 to 0. Number 169-25, authorization to transfer $139,000 to cover pension obligation shortfall in water and sewer funds, approved 8 to 0. Number 170-25, authorization to transfer $150,000 for legal services from full-time salaries to outside legal services, approved 7 to 0. Number 171-25, appropriation and transfer of $4,510,000 for Newton Patrol Association Collective Bargaining Agreement, approved 7 to 0. Number 172-25, expend $50,000 for bus stop improvements, and that's from the Dunstines Comprehensive Permit Mitigation Funds. That was approved as part of the Washington Street Pilot, approved 7 to 0. Number 173-25, authorization to transfer $125,000 for library electricity, approved 7 to 0. Number 174-25, authorization to transfer funds to the Health Insurance Trust Fund. This was, let's see, amended to change unexpected to unexpended, and that was approved 8 to 0. That was to transfer any unexpended funds left at the end of the fiscal year. So there's no specific amount. Number 175-25, appropriation of $10,000 for a legal settlement, approved 7 to 0. Number 180-25, transfer of $1,952,500 for the Newton Patrol Association Collective Bargaining Agreement, approved 7 to 0. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Malachi. Chair Dan... I'm sorry. Counselor Humphrey, point of order?
Yeah, I was just clarifying the finance. There had been a vote on the issue that ended up being no action necessary in Programs and Services, but I think they were maybe on two separate reports, and there was a different report from Finance. So I don't know if we hit correctly.
Thank you for that. Let me ask the clerk to look into that, please. Madam Clerk, Acting Clerk? Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes, so Counsel Malachi, if you could ask for a suspension of the rules to pull your committee to amend the vote to no action necessary.
Would you read the docket item, Ms. Flynn? Thank you, Counsel Humphrey, for bringing that to our attention.
So it's item 106-25, appropriation of $75,000 for Community Health Assessment and Community Health Improvement Plan.
So you need to pull your committee, Vice Chair Malachi, and ask to change the vote from approved to no action necessary? And you need a suspension of the rules to pull your committee?
It was voted out at a previous council meeting by the Finance, so it's not on your report.
You need to ask for a suspension of the rules for permission to pull your committee, and then ask your committee to vote no action necessary rather than approval. Okay? So do you want to ask for a suspension of the rules?
So moved.
All right, all in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Go ahead, you can pull your committee, if you would, to ask them to change the vote from approved to no action necessary.
Could I just have the docket item one more time?
It's 106-25.
106-25. Okay, so, yeah, let's get back to you. Okay, this was an item which was previously voted 3-2-2 out of Finance, and all in favor of no action necessarily...
Point of inquiry, please.
So you need Finance Committee?
Point of inquiry?
Sure.
Could I have a summation of why it's no action necessary?
It was withdrawn by the administration.
Oh, it was, okay.
They voted no action necessary in Programs and Services, so it's not going to pass. So the idea is that we have a consistent vote?
No, but I didn't understand why it was no action necessary in Programs and Services.
They withdrew it.
Because it was previously approved by Finance, then no action necessary by Programs and Services, we need to have a consistent vote?
No, my question was...
I'm sorry, would you...
The mayor's administration withdrew it.
Question for the Programs and Services Chair through the President. Go ahead, please, Counsel Krenzman.
Yeah, if it might be helpful, the history on this item was that it came up originally at Programs and Services. There were some questions about the health needs assessment, some very valid questions that were raised. Programs and Services held the item. Finance then took up the item, and I think approved the item, but Programs and Services hadn't yet taken up the item. When, before Programs and Services then took up the item, the administration actually chose to withdraw the item, submitted a letter saying, would you please withdraw this item? They were no longer looking to have the health needs assessment done. And so that's why, to be consistent, we're now looking for the Finance Committee report to match what Programs and Services done, which also aligns with what the administration's request was.
Thank you for raising the question, Counsel Greenberg. And Counsel Krenzman, thank you for providing that detailed answer. Counsel Malachi is asked to poll her committee for... to favor substituting. I think you can do it probably by a show of hands.
I have to watch the board here, too. Okay.
Go ahead, Counsel Malachi.
So we have, I believe, four in the room, and one...
Two online, three online as well. Counsel Mickley's joining us.
So 8 to 0, in favor of no action necessary.
No action necessary. Thank you. And thank you again, Counsel Humphrey, for raising that. Madam Acting Clerk, for helping us out there. Now we turn to Chair Danberg for Real Property Reuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met on Thursday, June 12. The report, by the way, begins at the bottom of page 148 and rolls over to 149. There was one item up for discussion. It was number 36-24, reuse of a parcel of land on Grove Street and Hancock Streets. The action item was a motion waiving the requirement that the public hearing be held within 60 days of the submission of the JPG report and to set the public hearing for September. We have not yet set a date. The clerk will poll the committee and find out what a good date in September will be to hold this meeting. Thank you very much. That concludes the report, and I move the report.
Thank you, Chair Danberg. All right, that ends first call. Madam Acting Clerk, will you call the roll, please, on first call? And then we have two, what I hope are relatively short items in second call.
Counsel Albright?
Aye.
Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Bigsby?
Aye.
Counsel Block?
Aye.
Counsel Danberg?
Aye.
Counsel Downs?
Aye.
Counsel Farrell?
Aye.
Counsel Gentile?
Aye.
Counsel Getz?
Aye.
Counsel Greenberg?
Aye.
Counsel Grossman?
Aye.
Counsel Humphrey?
Aye.
Counsel Kalas?
Aye.
Counsel Kelly?
Aye.
Counsel Krenzman?
Aye.
Counsel Leary?
Aye.
Counsel Lipoff?
Aye.
Counsel Lobovitz?
Aye.
Counsel Lucas?
Aye.
Counsel Malachi?
Aye.
Counsel Mickley?
Aye.
Counsel Oliver?
Aye.
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
And President Laredo?
Aye.
First call passes 24 to 0.
All right, we have two items... All right, we have two items on second call. They are, the first is an item from Land Use. I'm going to recognize Chair Kelly to briefly explain the item, because this was put on second call intentionally so we could have an opportunity to see an appropriate plans. But go ahead, Counsel Kelly.
Thank you. I think that this will be brief enough, but I do want to give the rest of the council a little background so they know what we're voting on. The Land Use Committee met on Tuesday, June 3rd, where a public hearing was held on item 155-25, a request to allow three attached single-family dwellings at 3 Newland Street in Auburndale. The lot is unique due to its configuration and being at the juncture of two streets, abutting the Mass Pike on one side. One of the streets is listed as a public way and the other as a private way. The committee had concerns about the overhead area between two underground parking areas as the proposed railing and open space did not seem safe to most of the committee members. Recommendations were made to enclose the overhead space and make the railings taller, and we would like to see renderings of what those would look like, which is why it was put on second call. One counselor was concerned that this project would add a significant traffic increase to the neighborhood. Other counselors and a neighbor who spoke did not share that concern. This counselor also suggested that future owners should contribute to any improvements to the private way, as they would likely be using it to access the site. The Land Use Committee voted six to two in favor, subject to second call tonight, as we expected to see how the petitioner would address the open space above the garages and any update on the public-private way question, and those have both been answered. That concludes the brief report.
All right, thank you. I have next, I've recognized Counsel Lucas, and then Block.
Thank you, President Laredo. Yes, I was one of the two counselors who voted against this item in committee. It is my intention to vote for the item tonight. As Counsel Kelly stated, there was, I thought, a major problem with the site plan. That has been resolved, so the project is all set for me, so I'm going to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lucas. Counsel Block?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was the other negative vote in committee. I was concerned that the determination that we are required to make regarding whether this development would have a negative impact on the neighborhood did not adequately consider that the traffic impact on a private way would be significantly affected. And I am happy to report that the petitioner plans to voluntarily offer $10,000 to the improvement of this private way when the owners of the private way take steps to improve that street. So I will also be voting in favor of this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Block. Anyone else who wishes to be heard on this matter? All right, seeing none, Madam Acting Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counsel Albrecht?
Aye.
Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Bigsby?
Aye.
Counsel Block?
Aye.
Counsel Danberg?
Aye.
Counsel Downs?
Aye.
Counsel Farrell?
Aye.
Counsel Gentile?
Aye.
Counsel Getz?
Aye.
Counsel Greenberg?
Aye.
Counsel Grossman?
Aye.
Counsel Humphrey?
Aye.
Counsel Kalas?
Aye.
Counsel Kelly?
Aye.
Counsel Krenzman?
Aye.
Counsel Leary?
Aye.
Counsel Lipoff?
Aye.
Counsel Lobovitz?
Aye.
Counsel Lucas?
Aye.
Counsel Malachi?
Aye.
Counsel Mickley?
Aye.
Counsel Oliver?
Aye.
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
And President Laredo?
Aye.
The motion passes 23 to 1.
All right, we have one other item. This is an item that was postponed to a date certain. It is from Finance. I'm going to recognize the Vice Chair very briefly, because I do believe this was reported out previously. So if you could just read the item into the record, and I think Counsel Albrecht, you had requested that it be placed on postponed, so we'll hear from you first. Go ahead, please.
Okay, and this was, or what was the date of the meeting was?
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Yeah.
We'll get to the page.
Okay, it'll be on the public facilities page?
It's on page...
I've got it here. Okay. Item number 150-25, appropriate and expend the sum of $50,000 for sidewalk construction from the Trio Washington Place Mitigation Fund for improvements to the low-lav sidewalk construction.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Malachi. Counsel Albrecht, do you want to just briefly speak to this?
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. President. So I had put this on second call because I, and I guess Counsel Lucas, couldn't remember that we had approved that expenditure. Since that time, I went back and found that the three of us, excuse me, had had a conversation, a text conversation back a year ago in April about this project and approving the money not just for an RRFB, but also to fix the sidewalk where the RRFB was to be installed. And we had some email conversation with Ned Cod about this. I think what I didn't ever feel was concluded was, you know, did DPW actually get final approval from the three Ward two counselors that this was something that we approved of? And since that time, since the last meeting, the three of us talked. We confirmed that we're okay with the expenditure. And Counsel Lucas, I believe, wrote an email to Commissioner Sullivan asking that the process for approval from the Ward counselors be a little bit firmed up so that we are reminded and actually asked for formal approval for the expenditure. And so I think the matter is closed, and we're happy to move, to vote for this particular expenditure.
Thank you, Counsel Albrecht. Anyone else wish to be heard in the item? Seeing none, we're going to do this in a roll call. Vote, please.
Counsel Albrecht?
Aye.
Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Bigsby?
Aye.
Counsel Block?
Aye.
Counsel Danberg?
Aye.
Counsel Downs?
Aye.
Counsel Farrell?
Aye.
Counsel Gentile?
Aye.
Counsel Getz?
Aye.
Counsel Greenberg?
Aye.
Counsel Grossman?
Aye.
Counsel Humphrey?
Aye.
Counsel Kalas?
Aye.
Counsel Kelly?
Aye.
Counsel Krenzman?
Aye.
Counsel Leary?
Aye.
Counsel Lipoff?
Aye.
Counsel Lobovitz?
Aye.
Counsel Lucas?
Aye.
Counsel Malachi?
Aye.
Counsel Mickley?
Aye.
Counsel Oliver?
Aye.
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
And President Laredo?
Aye.
The motion passes 24 to zero.
All right. With that, we are adjourned at 8:43 PM. Thank you all very much. We don't have a full council meeting till July, but we do have other meetings coming up in the next few days. Thank you.